Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is 5:32 PM on Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017. Earl, call Michelle, please.
Councilwoman Ollard.
Present.
Councilman Azar.
Present.
Councilwoman Crossen.
Present.
Councilman DeBong.
Here.
Councilman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Garrison.
Present.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
And Councilman Asser.
Present.
Councilman Nation.
Here.
All are present.
The purpose of this special call meeting is to have a discussion concerning the Department of Local Government Finance 1782 Notice for the fiscal year 2017 and the current status of the 2017 city federal budget. We are not going to have public comments or questions tonight. If you would like to have questions concerning this, our meeting for public comments will be on 9/14 at 5:30 PM. Earlier on today, members of the Department of Local Government Finance, as well as State Board of Accounts, met with the administration this morning and then this afternoon they met with myself and Councilman Earl Elliott. So I'd like to give the mayor an opportunity to address the council on basically what the discussions were today, what led us to where we're at right now, and to address what we're going to be doing moving forward.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett, yes, as you described, we had requested a meeting with the Department of Local Government Finance really for two reasons. One was to ensure that our plan to address the 1782 notice for 2017 was acceptable to them. And then the second piece is to ensure that for the 2018 budget process that we're currently under, to make sure that nothing happens again as what happened this year. And I'm certain that 2017 is an anomaly from a perspective of how the Department of Local Government Finance processed, you know, without getting into all those details, as I've shared with all of you, forms changed primarily, and we were required to put our tax cap losses on as an expense. So instead of reducing revenues, they just added on as an expense, they put it at the bottom of the forms. And, you know, we really weren't sure how they would process that then, how they would add it together or not. There wasn't any guidance that was put out by the DLGF. They just said, "This is the way you fill out the forms." So council approved the budget, we sent the forms in with our following the rules to the T. And when the 1782 notice came back, you know, they basically told us that by their actions that we needed to make up the deficit that we carried into 2017 from 2016, which is about $8 million. And so that was the outcome of that decision that they made. It's all on paper, and that's what we need to keep in mind. You know, they knew after the fact, and we talked to them a few weeks later and multiple times over months, and in our discussions with Umbal, who has a regular dialogue with the DLGF, they admitted that we can't make up the $8 million in one year because we don't have that money just sitting back in reserves or in other funds that we can allocate enough money to make all that up in one year. So today's meeting was to walk through our plan to address that. You know, one of the issues that's come up recently was regarding kind of what's the penalty if you don't do it? And so that was one of the important things that we talked to the State Board of Accounts today about. Of course, DLGF doesn't have anything to do with that, but how the State Board of Accounts would react to it. Because from the perspective of the Department of Local Government Finance, once they're done with approving the budgets for '17, they're done with it. Now, what will happen for the rest of the year then is they will have to approve any appropriation that comes from the city, like they do any other community. So anything you do that's outside of the budget, you send to the DLGF for their approval or denial. And so we wanted to make sure that our plan fit the criteria that they have to address the 1782 notice so that we can continue to operate our budget the way we intended to when you approved it last October. We had a great meeting today, it was very good. And I anticipated a good meeting, you know, you just never know exactly, but as we rolled out our plan to them, we wanted to make sure before we bring those specific details to you that it would be okay with the process as we roll forward and get to the end of the year. And so we were very comforted in knowing that every step that we have in there are things that they will accept when we send our appropriations in. And, you know, they're not going to make any other statement other than that until they see the numbers. We provided the numbers today and they've not had a chance to vet the capital that we put together for the funds that we want to reallocate some expenses to, to move us towards, you know, getting that whole. So the second meeting, of course, I did not attend. City Controller was there, I had another meeting this afternoon, but you guys met with them and I don't, I've heard some bits and pieces, but you can share that with all the rest of us at some point. But the next steps in the process are that on the Sunshine Meeting in September, Paige Sansone will be here from Umbal, H.D. Umbal and Associates, to do our five-year plan. And it begins in '17. So we will address the 1782 notice for '17 as we look forward into '18, '19, '20, and '21 of what all of our funds will be doing over that period of time. And so, as I'd stated to you guys a couple of weeks ago in an email, that's when we'll have the details fully pulled together. Today was for us to ensure that we were on the right path. We are. And so now we need to drill it down to the specific line items over the next couple of weeks and then present that plan in that September meeting. So as I've said along, I was confident we would get it worked out, and we will. There are some steps the city council will have to take, but it puts us in a really good position. And as we look at specifically the general fund, we're going to be able to share with you and show how we're reducing our borrowing through either TAW and/or redevelopment loan. And of course, that's dependent on public safety, local option income tax, whatever's decided by the county. That's the only caveat that's left. There's no other revenues that need to be increased or anything that we need to do as part of our plan. And so we'll go through that Umbal plan, as I said, here in a couple of weeks. So in a nutshell, I feel really good after today's meeting, meeting with both State Board of Accounts and the DLGF. Our attorneys feel good about, you know, where we're at, that we're following along here, and we're going to be in compliance. And so we'll put this issue behind us here as soon as we bring the appropriations we need to do to the council for action. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding any of that.
Councilman Elliott.
Mayor, will we be able to, will the plan be able to address the total 9.2 million in the reductions between the four, total of four reductions?
Yes, right. And then thing to keep in mind, as an example, and we'll just pick transportation out because that's the easy one, the easiest one to talk about, we took in about $300,000 more in revenue and we spent about $500,000 less than what the DLGF reflected. So, you know, that was, I'm not going to say it's on them, but that could have been fixed earlier, but the numbers they looked at were not right. So that's an easy fix, we don't have to do anything other than appropriation for the cash balance to raise the budget back up, but the money's already there and all that. The other three are a little bit more complicated because they have specific things we need to reassign somewhere else, but it will address all of those.
Okay. And did you say no revenue streams or?
Other than, you know, we're counting on some public safety low it to come in next year, obviously not, we don't need anything this year.
For the '17 issue?
Yes, right, so to say, right, exactly.
Okay.
But when we look at our three-year plan for the general fund and what we'll need to borrow, and it ties directly into that comprehensive financial plan where the only thing we're counting on over the next three years for sure is a public safety low it. It would be any new revenue.
Okay. And then when I commented this afternoon during our meeting that we just wait and have a special meeting sometime between Christmas and New Year's to get this all buttoned up?
No, I think we're, our goal would be to get it to you in October.
Well, they said, they said December 15th.
I know, that's what they said. That's the deadline, so it's December 15th. But our plan is to get it to you in October.
Okay.
All of it in one package.
I yield.
You guys want to give your report on what happened after their meeting?
First off, I'd like to thank, you know, the DLGF and State Board of Accounts for coming. I mean, I don't know how often they do that, but I think they saw the importance of us getting information from them directly. So, you know, I was grateful that they were able to do that. But basically, you know, we talked about, you know, Senate Bill 321, and one of the things that it tells you to do is to get the circuit breaker amounts, but we were told that it is recommended to enter those into the budget, but it's not mandatory. So if we would have put zeros in there, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in right now. So I'm sure Earl will agree that that was kind of eye-opening for us, that they didn't tell us that we necessarily had to do that. So other municipalities entered zeros, other municipalities entered their circuit breaker amounts. So not everybody did comply with what the request was for DLGF. Another thing is that they did have workshops to go over this, multiple workshops. I don't remember, Leslie, you can comment on this, if you attended those or if you got memos on that, but they did have workshops to kind of give guidance to the administration on what they were to do. They're more welcome to, they said that they'd be more than happy to come back next week to address the council as a whole if we decide to do that at the end of the meeting. But I think when they, we asked about the plan, they told us that it's really not up to them to say if that's a good plan or not. It's basically up to us as a city council legislative fiscal body to determine if that's a reasonable plan or not, and all that they'll do is just review the appropriations. Got anything to add to that, Earl?
Yeah, there were five people here from Indianapolis, three from DLGF and two from State Board of Accounts. That included the Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner, I believe, of the DLGF. I was a bit taken aback by the number and who they were at that meeting. And also thank them, they were very responsive to all of our questions. Different people seemed to have different areas of expertise. Based on what the question was, somebody, you know, immediately gave us an answer. My two main lines of concern in talking with them were the strategies that I could see being presented to us eventually to fix the problem. Were they, were they going to be valid strategies? And I sensed that they will be. I mean, Karen did mention they're not there to give direction related to the plan, they're just, we're just there to answer our questions. And was also concerned about the liabilities and risks, what are they and whom they might fall on. Well, if the laws are flexible as to the amount of that circuit breaker amount, anywhere between zero and an actual amount or even an excessive amount, I'm much less concerned about that. And that certainly makes some sense why the, to me, why the administration didn't share my level of concern about that. It's incredibly flexible, but I really believe, you know, we need to adopt our own policy related to what number we ought to use for a circuit breaker in our, in our budget forms. And then I passed out some information that I'll go over at the appropriate time to just kind of talk to you briefly about what I think the strategies are going to be and so that you can be thinking along those lines. Because once we get to September, sometimes we're a little deliberate in making decisions. So September could be October and, you know, before you know it, the year will be over. So, but I'll hold those for right now and stick to the point.
Was there any, I think the mayor mentioned it in his remarks, but I didn't, I don't think he answered it anyway, the question of what would a penalty be? And did you get, was that a question that came up in your conversations with these folks and?
You want to tackle that one?
Well, the code section is very short, and it's referred to a lot of different areas of state law, apparently refer to that code section from what they told us. But there really is no strict definition of public officials as that term is used. And I don't even think there's a general definition of how that is used. But the amount that's in there is 125% of the amount of the expenditures in excess of the approved appropriations. And I just got from the conversation, it's very rarely been utilized or assessed. They couldn't really recall any specific circumstances.
Correct.
So there's no timeframe, I mean, do we have five years, do we have four years, two years to get this $8 million?
Oh, we have to do it by the end of the year?
End of the year.
And the mayor?
And our plan addresses that. So we're not going to be, as long as we do the steps we need to take here, which there's nothing that's really painful, then we will be fine at the end of the year. And that's when it counts, because the State Board of Accounts then will audit 2017 and will determine whether you overspent in any of those areas.
Yeah.
And well, I'm sorry, just I would just say, just because, keep this in mind, you know, who knows when they're going to do our 2017 audit? I mean, they owe us our 2016 audit. So as we see today and, you know, in the newspaper, we're talking about 2015, which of course, nothing changed from '14 to '15. It's in '16 when things changed. We need to get our '16 audit done, and then at some point they'll do the '17 audit. So just a food for thought.
Well, they answered some of the questions about penalties and about what's expected on that form, but I guess that the concern still remains for me that you stayed here today as long as we can below it. And I don't know about anybody else's crystal ball, but I don't think that's a done deal yet. And what are our plans if we don't get below it?
Can I? So in the comprehensive financial plan, they cannot include the low it yet. So when you see this plan from Umbal, it will not include that. And some of our things, we can show some scenarios. Until they vote on it, can't be included in that plan. So it has nothing to do with '17, '18 and beyond.
Councilman Morris.
Explain again the confusion with the forms, what happened?
No, there was no confusion on the forms. We followed the rules to the T. And we put our estimates in there that we believed they would be. We were a little low on our estimates because, you know, our tax caps went up again this year that we did not know at the time we did the budget. It turned into 9.8 million and we estimated about 8.7 million for the general fund, as an example. So we filled the forms out correctly. We went from the workshop perspective or anything else you want to look at, we did it the way you were supposed to do it.
And nothing was red flagged?
No, because that's the way it was supposed to be done by everybody. But later on, and then they told some entities that you can do your own estimates or you can put zero in it. Well, you know, they didn't tell you that in the workshop. So.
I yield.
So basically, the, excuse me, the DLGF and the State Board of Accounts felt that the administration did what they were supposed to do in filling the forms out and so on. Yep, they reaffirmed that today, that we did what we should have done. Other units probably didn't.
Okay. I yield. Councilman Garrison.
Karen, I'll ask you this. The 1782 notice says that we need to reduce the general fund budget by $8 million this year, is that correct?
Correct.
Did they, DLGF or State Board of Accounts, happen to say if we fall short, does that money roll over, that balance due roll over into 2018 budget?
That wasn't addressed. I mean, that's, we're just waiting on the plan. Will the plan address all $8 million of that?
Yes, uh-huh. So your question is like, if we, let's say we only did $4 million, and then what happens to the other $4 million?
Does that $4 million do then the following year in addition to whatever next year?
No, it would just be a negative $4 million balance at the end of the year instead of a negative $8 million balance that we started this year with.
But at what point would that be due? I guess is what I'm trying to figure out.
That's our deficit. So the only thing that happens is when they come in and audit, then they would say you overspent the general fund by $4 million.
Okay, well then, at what point would that need to be made up?
Well, with the public safety low it, we'll be whole all the way in '19, but, and once again, we can't count that yet.
Okay, so you're kind of waiting on that.
Yeah, but we're going to put a huge, you know, permanent dent in this this year.
Okay.
Without any question. But our goal was to cover it all so that when we get to the end of the year, there's a positive balance in the general fund and we don't have to worry about any of these penalties or any of these other things.
All right. And I guess to you, Mayor, you probably heard there was a lot of frustration here around this table last month about us finding this news out late and that I guess the DLGF had notified us early of last year, of this year. And we were frustrated that that information didn't get to us. Is there a reason why that didn't get to us?
Well, all I can say is we've never sent the 1782 notices to the council till last year. We had a request to get that. The city had not done that in the past, so no excuse, we just had not done that. We immediately, when we got the CTA done on March 1st, that was the first step for Umbal to begin the planning process. And so with the 1782 notice in our five-year comprehensive financial plan, they got started on that in March. And so they have been working on that. And before we wanted to share the notice with no plan, we wanted to have a plan in place. Their plan got done in July, and we shared it with Councilman Elliott in a, in a meeting recently, made some additional tweaks to it, and now the plan is completed that addresses that 1782 notice. And then, as I said, we're going to roll that out in September. So, I mean, we needed a plan to go with it. If we would have just given you the 1782 notice and no plan, I'm sure we would have been criticized for that also. I wanted the whole package to be together. And Leslie being gone on FMLA for three months kind of put a little bit of a dent in some of our timing. It didn't stop anything, but it slowed some things down a little bit.
In the future, do you think that, I mean, that's a pretty significant number. I know you hadn't done that before, but I don't know if they've ever said you need to reduce it by?
Not like that.
In the future, wouldn't it not be better to at least communicate that with our council president or our finance chair?
Yeah, we can do that.
This, you know, nothing in stone, we don't have a plan yet, but this is in the works and may be coming.
But I wouldn't expect that again. I think this is a one-time thing, I really do. I just don't see anything unless for some reason, set values go down and we lose millions or more dollars, we've already headed the other direction.
Councilman Garrison, I just want to let you know that I did speak with the deputy commissioner that I've added Michelle to the email list for the 1782 notices in the future so we don't have to rely on the administration to get that information.
So that's going to be our way of finding, that was my next question, how we're going to do this in the future? And they're okay with that? State Board of Accounts, DLGF?
And let me just add one thing, Mr. President. And the county sends that out, so I mean, it could be added to that list. So they send it out to all the taxing entities. That's where the final one comes from, not the DLGF. Comes from the county.
The final budget order?
Right.
Right, okay. I think the, I'm not certain that the 1782 is a public document initially because it's a work-in-process document that you've got, was it 10, 10 days total to respond?
Yeah.
To that document, and then shortly thereafter, a final budget order for the county is issued, which I believe is a public document.
Yes, that's correct.
That's the way I understand it. I do not have a copy of a draft of that financial plan. I mean, they, it was gathered back up at the end of the, end of the discussion, I just want to make sure that's clear.
We gave ours back too.
And Leslie is the, is the CTA reporter, is that the one that gets on Gateway? Is that what that, okay. Thank you.
You.
To the two councilmembers that went today, did you get a feeling from the DLGF? What kind of feeling did you get from the DLGF regarding our finances and general fund? Are they?
They were good poker players, I'll tell you that. I think they just basically felt like it was us as a council to address our financial situation. I don't think they were going to come in, I mean, if we're expecting the state to kind of help us, I think, at least in my opinion, that that's, that's not what's going to happen. It's going to be up to the council to make those decisions.
The, my only comment to that is, yeah, they didn't give us any indication, but, you know, we do know our end of '16 numbers were somewhat better than the end of '15. I did go back and check our general fund budget. It lends itself towards like a $1,950,000 surplus without any underspend. If we have a 1% or 2% underspend, that it could get up to $2.5 million, you know, by the end of the year. And I told them that, you know, in this meeting, I wanted them, I just wanted to say something where they knew, you know, we were, we as a council, and we as a city were, were working on that.
I yield for now, thanks. I had a couple of questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Todd.
That's all right. It's, as has been pointed out, the negative balances are not just in the general fund. There are some other funds that are smaller that also have negative balances. This order says that all funds need to be positive by the end of 2017, right?
Right, it's those four, transportation parks, police pension, and general.
Right. And the total number of all four of those funds for the amount of money that needs to be come up with is 9.2 million?
Yep.
9.4 million, it goes there. Will the council need to approve more borrowing as part of this plan?
There may be a component to that, that's part of our strategy here.
Because just a real cursory look at Councilman Elliott's numbers here, if it's $9.4 million that we have to come up with, there isn't $9.4 million of money, not only in reserves, but in all of our accounts, period. How close can we come if we emptied out all of the positive balances and the line items that we're able to move around? How close can we come to zero? Within two or three million bucks?
Let me take a few minutes and go over the four-page handout that I gave you. The ones highlighted in pink, those are the four funds that need attention. And then the ones highlighted in yellow or green, those are, those are funds that had positive balances as June 30, '17. So the, so the objective, I believe, of the strategies is going to be to reduce the balances of the greenish-yellow funds and increase the balances of the pink funds. And I think the strategies for that to happen will be transfers of cash balances to the pink funds or movement and/or movement of expenses to the yellow funds. I mean, it's pretty much that, that simple. So the, so the balances in the pink funds will rise, the balances of the green-yellow funds will drop. Total will stay the same, it's just a question of which fund that's in as the expenses are moved and balances are transferred and whatever that's presented in their, their plan. That's what I see happening. So I can see us receiving a number of resolutions to perhaps transfer money and then also additional appropriations to appropriate in those funds that are going to be taking, you know, more expense than what was, than what was budgeted. So that's the first two pages. The third page is the.
Just a quick point of information, Earl, that's for 2017?
I'm sorry?
So that's for the 2017 plan?
2017, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Then, those are the, those are the, the first two pages are just the cash balance schedule, the most recent one that we've been providing, which is June. The third page, that identifies the four funds that need attention. I get a total of $9,230,000 is the, is the total. And then the last page is the Form 4V that I found this afternoon, and that's, that apparently is the infamous property tax cap impact number all the way down at the bottom that caused all of this. So I don't know if that appears on any other form, Leslie, but this is the first one I wandered into that had the exact number to the dollar that they used in their 1782 response.
So, Earl, it looks like the total of all of your green funds is 9.3 million dollars.
I understand. You, I mean, you're right, and it's not going to be able to use every dollar to have those tapped. So how, how we're going to get to, to the 9.2, we'll, we'll just have to wait and, wait and see.
Because we need operating money to get. Because we need operating money to get through the end of the year for some of this stuff. So going down the list of affected funds, rainy day fund seems like a natural. It's rainy day. Loit, special distribution, which presumably is paving, but I'm not sure. Says it's now in edit.
Yeah, it's Margaret Avenue.
Margaret Avenue.
Yeah.
EMS non-inverting, fire department contractual services, engineering non-inverting, cumulative capital development, cumulative capital improvement, and then economic development income tax, which is the biggest one, almost $4.3 million, and then Parks Project Fund. So we empty out all of these funds or get them as close to empty as possible, and then we're left with a gap of a couple million bucks, which I presume we're going to end up borrowing from redevelopment. That's what makes the most sense to me. And since I griped about it coming out of downtown, it'll probably come out of Walmart's tip. But I haven't seen a plan. But if I were being paid to come up with a plan, that's probably what I would come up with, since all of those things are quote-unquote "legal." They're just hard to stomach.
The yellow-green funds...
Please, yeah.
The yellow-green funds are candidates. I don't know if they've been selected or not. It's just ones that got my attention as I looked at our list.
Since they have positive balances, yeah.
Yeah.
Are there other funds that can be used or can't be used? Either way?
None that are readily apparent to me that could be used.
Okay, but there are certain ones that cannot, sure. And if, it's obvious you can't take these down to zero.
Right.
I mean, if you, if you, if this makes up for the, if this makes up for the 8 million or 9 million, whatever it is, you can't take it all out of edit. You can't take 4.2 million out of edit.
Why not?
Is there anything left?
Do we need anything left in it?
I don't know. Answer it.
Oh, just to go back, these are the funds that are the primary targets. There really aren't any others to be able to use and are not part of our cash pool. And once again, just to kind of go back to another point that Councilman Elliott made a while ago, when we make all of these transactions, our cash pool doesn't change at all. Alls we're doing is raising numbers and lowering numbers. This is all on paper. Once again, that's a really important thing to keep in mind. We have a balanced general fund budget for this year. We're going to take in more revenue than what we're going to have expenses, but they've reduced our budget. And so that's why we have to address this.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. A balanced general fund budget?
Absolutely. That's what you approved last October.
That has a structural $8 million plus...
Now it does. It did not when you approved it. So, and we will fix that, so it will again.
Because there was phantom income included in it.
No, no, absolutely not.
I'm having a hard time understanding this. Maybe you all get it and I don't. But I don't understand how we have a balanced budget, but yet we're being asked to cut $8 million from our balanced general fund budget.
Because we brought in a negative $8 million balance into the year. That's why.
Okay.
But the revenues and expenses, the revenues exceed the expenses in 2017 for the general fund, period. That's what you approved. And we did the same thing in '16. Revenues passed up expenses in '16 also, two straight years.
All right.
That's why the deficit has begun to go the other direction. It's going down.
I think I interrupted George.
No, go ahead. I yield.
No. Yeah.
Just looking at Parks and Recreation, where are we at on the golf courses? You had some bids?
Yeah, we're working on the bids. We've got four bids back.
Okay.
So we're working through to make some recommendations to the park board. But that won't have any impact on this because those balances over the last 20 years of accumulating deficits, we'll have to do something special down the road on that to clear those off the books at some point.
I yield. All right, I was just... Councilman O'Leary?
First of all, shouldn't, what part does Umball pay in, play in the 1782 forms?
Well, I mean, they help us put the budget together. So then when we get the 1782 notice, that's what we operate with. So then, in this case, Umball is using that 1782 notice as part of their five-year comprehensive financial plan to address issues in 2017 and then for the next four years.
But shouldn't they have known to put the zero in there and then we would have been...
No. And they wouldn't recommend putting a zero in there, just like the DLGF doesn't recommend it, but you can. If we'd have put a zero in there, we wouldn't be having this meeting today. Nobody would be even talking about this.
That's why I don't understand why, you know, we're paying Umball that they didn't...
Because that's not, that's, it was already, you know, the numbers were put in last October. So the 1782 notice comes in February, and we deal with it in '17, not '16.
And I know you said that, you know, the council's going to have to have some part in this. Can you give us any ideas on what you're thinking is going to come before us?
Appropriations, reassigning expenses to other similar areas as a one-time thing.
So if we take...
So we have to have additional appropriation.
Okay. And I know some of these that are highlighted, some of these different funds, and, you know, if we start where we've got to take the money out of them, is that going to hinder...
No. We've cash flowed every one of these, and we'll still be able to continue with normal operations, the things we have to do this year.
And no projects, but on hold?
Nope, nope.
Are all of our vendors being paid?
Yep.
Today?
Running 30 days, like we always do, and the normal business time, so.
Okay, I yield.
Mayor, I just think the public would like to have kind of a timeline of the events. When were you made aware of the 1782 notice?
Well, I knew we received one. I got the details from our financial consultants in May of kind of what the strategy was to attack it.
Right. So we received it in January with the deadline to file something back with the state in February, and you're saying you didn't receive anything until May?
Well, no, I knew that there was an issue, but I didn't, I never received the 1782 notice.
Okay, so when did you realize that there was an issue?
In February, they told me there was some funds that had been cut, but I didn't have the details of that until May.
Funds of $8 million in the general fund, did you have that? Okay, so you knew that in February? Because you had said earlier on...
No, 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 no. Well, you're saying just the general fund part. No, I didn't know the totals because I had not seen the 1782 notice.
When did you see those?
In May.
May, okay. Is it normal for you to have three or four months to go by before you receive those?
Yeah, absolutely could be. That's not my job. I don't do that. Financial consultants and the controller deals with that, and they were dealing with it.
All right, so I want to make sure. You're saying it's not your job to tackle an 8 or $9 million deficit?
No, that's not what your question was.
Okay. My question is, when did you, when were you made aware of the 1782 notices?
That we received it in February.
Okay.
But not any of the details or what we were going to do to address it until May.
Until May. So it's normal to wait three or four months before you try and figure out a $8 million problem?
No, it was, they were working on it. It's not my job to figure out the $8 million. It's our financial consultant's job to bring a plan to me, and I received that in May.
Okay. And then you had said that we might have some borrowing to do. Is that just with redevelopment, or we going to need to do another TAW with the banks?
No, I think we'll need to do a TAW. That won't be until next year. That will not have any effect on 2017.
Okay. And did you know about, I know we're talking timeframe, did you know about, we had the TAW loan, then we had three redevelopment loans. So did you know about, I say redevelopment loans, we did the special call in February, and then we did...
We renewed it.
Renewed it. I'm sorry, two. I apologize. So it totaled three loans. So did you feel like that wasn't something the council should know about when we made those borrowing decisions to give us that information?
To borrow money in between January and December has no bearing on us being able to solve the 1782 notice. None at all. That's all cash flow-related things. Has nothing to do with making the general fund whole.
Now, I know redevelopment may or may not care about that, but did the financial institution know about that with the TAW loan? About the 1782 notice?
I don't know all the information. They get from our attorneys. I'm not sure. They get a lot of financial information. I can't answer that. They get a ton of financial information to make that decision.
Okay.
They may or may not have had that. I don't know.
You know, Mayor, and I know last month, you know, there was a lot of frustration here, and I guess I'm starting to get a little frustrated myself with the fact that, you know, we may know, we may not know. That's not my job. I think the public is, you know, wanting this council to help tackle our deficit and our financial situation, but when we're not getting information from the administration, it kind of gets a little frustrating.
Like what kind of information? Give me an example.
The fact that we didn't know about this when we did redevelopment loans, TAW loans.
It has no bearing on those redevelopment loans. Just none.
Wouldn't you think that would be the council's decision to make if that has bearing or not?
I suppose it could be, but it doesn't. So the answer would still be the same.
Okay. I yield. Councilman Elliott?
I'm going to let one little cat out of the bag from the meeting I was at in July, but there was talk and the plan had some projected surpluses being accumulated in the different funds, some surplus targets. Those are still there, I presume?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I would say that we probably ought to adjust a couple of those, but yes, minimum of 10%, 15% will probably be shown in most of those. And of course, they'd like us to shoot for 25%. So I think, as we move forward in this plan, there may be some funds that may take a little longer to get there, yeah. But absolutely still in there. That hasn't changed.
Surplus, good words. Nice to see that on paper.
Yep, yep. It's all still there.
Councilman O'Leary?
And just so we're clear, I know you've already had your meeting, correct, and have heard some of the plan that they've laid out, right?
It was a very lengthy plan, from what I remember, and a relatively short meeting. So, I mean, I really didn't get a chance to study much of it. And like I said, I had to turn it back in at the end of the meeting because it was just a draft, kind of like the State Board of Accounts closing conference. But, I mean, it's obvious, the funds that have money have larger balances. Those balances are going to need to go down, so the funds that don't have as much money there should go back up. So, no change in the total, so.
So this is the plan that we're going to learn about on 9/14?
No, 9/7. It's sunshine meeting, special call before the council meeting.
9/14, they're coming to discuss Santa.
Sorry, I had the wrong date. Okay.
So both of those nights, Umball will be here, different people.
Okay, he's done. I'm sorry.
I guess I'm just, and maybe this is just me or not. I yield.
Yeah, you had said that you didn't, you don't consider the Loit when you're making this because we don't know if we're going to get it or not. Are there alternate plans if we don't?
Well, we'll still operate under what we're operating now, but it means it takes longer to pay back the general fund deficit. We're going to make these other three funds whole. You know, transit is a fluke. That's just, that wasn't done properly over there. They didn't look at the current data. The other three, or the other two, will be fixed permanently. Parks and police pension will be positive as we move forward. The general fund, you know, we may still have some work to do on that. We'll just see. Depends on what the Loit is, how fast we do it. If we get the Loit at 0.75%, that generates $3.6 million a year that we'll use that will shift right out of the general fund. So our general fund will drop from 31.7 by 3.6 million. And then we also have a $400,000 positive cash flow of not paying contractual obligation to the county for 911 service. So that's a $4 million swing, beginning next year, if that happens. If it's less than that, then... So we'll show some scenarios, but in Umball's plan, they can't put that in there right now. All they can do is flip no doubt that that's a possibility. So we're not asking for any other revenue increases or anything besides that.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Councilman Cross?
In the, outside of this 2017 issue, if the Loit doesn't come through, how, how can there not be any requests for additional revenue?
We had, our 2017 budget that we approved had a surplus of revenue over expense of $1,950,000. And if we don't spend all of the expenses 1% or 2%, that could raise that up to as high as $2.5 million more in than what we take out. I can't imagine any scenario that we wouldn't approve a similar-type budget for 2018 that's also going to have a pretty significant surplus for 2018 and on without any new source of revenue.
That's correct.
So, we're going to, it's going to gradually get better. The question is, you know, at what rate?
Right, that's the question.
But we're not in control of that, so.
Right, okay, I yield.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is, we need to decide if we want the DLGF to come next Tuesday to speak to the whole council as a whole. We need to kind of have some attention on that.
You want me to say something about it?
Sure.
Obviously not.
Okay.
Because obviously, we, they've got whatever answers they needed at the time, and they're pretty ambiguous what they're telling us anyway. So I don't, I don't see the need for it. I think we've already got the information that I believe we will need. That's just my personal opinion. I yield.
Councilman Park?
I guess I would ask if anyone has any further questions. You would think they would need to answer, and if not, then I don't think it's necessary either.
I mean, it's not too often that they come to speak to the council, so that's my only caveat to that, is, you know, we take advantage of that. But again, that's whatever the council decides.
Well, for my money, you know, this significant change of $8 million coming eight months into the year late, my thought was we need to start getting information directly from the DLGF. Sounds like you're taking care of that with emails by the DLGF, and another option is through the county. We should probably reach out to them, make sure we're getting it twice. So if we're getting that, it sounds like they're a little reluctant to share too much information with you anyway, right?
That's how I feel.
Mayor, you just nod. Are they kind of that way with you too? They don't really share a lot of information, or?
They're done with 17. You know what I mean? All we wanted to make sure today, what they told us was that the appropriations we do have to follow all the rules, appropriations. So we laid out our plan. They breathed it all this fit into the categories, and it's up to us to do the paperwork once the council acts upon it. That's all they'll do on that. We wanted to make sure that '18, that we don't have an issue again, so we address that too.
Well, I mean, I'm okay if they don't come, but I'd never talked to them, so I'd love to have the opportunity to ask them questions. Not that I have any right now, but if you guys want to have them, gals want to have them, I'm game for that.
Councilman O'Leary?
I think if we're, some of us are looking for them to give us guidance on what to do. It's not going to happen. They're just going to tell us what has to be done as far as doing the paperwork, doing the budget, doing this, doing that. And then it's going to be up to us as a council to decide where we go from there. I don't think they're going to give us any answers as far as what we need to do. That's just, I don't want guidance. I wouldn't want guidance from them.
I've always found them very responsive to emails. I mean, really fast in getting a response, including related to this issue. My thinking is, we ought to see what's, you know, what's in the plan. And if there's enough of the plan we aren't happy with, then we may want to talk to them again. But for right now, you know, we need to get ourselves a bead on the, on what's in the, you know, what's in the plan and be a different resolutions and so forth we're going to be asked to pass, to implement the plan.
And Mayor, we will have this plan September 7?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have to remember on the detail level now, specific actions, so we want to make sure that... to make sure that at this level, we're doing the thing that it is, so now we're going to take it down to what you guys...
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Well, I'll just send correspondence to Deputy Commissioner Parkinson and tell us that we won't need them to come next week, but maybe be on standby in case we need a clarification in September. Last?
Move to adjourn. Oh, sorry.
You know, I'd like to stop you during this.
Why do you do that?
I just wanted to remind everybody that the public hearing on the budget is September 14, 5:30. And the budget will not be on the September ordinances, I mean, agendas. And you also have a meeting scheduled for September 19. I will send out notices on notice now.
I move to adjourn.
It's been moved to adjourn by Councilman Azar, second by Councilman DeBonnol, would you favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, adjourned.